I hereby call the meeting of the Lafayette City Council to a order. Please stand to the flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Kennedy, could you please call?
Mr. Paulson? Dr. Burrows?
President.
Councilor Carswell?
President.
Councilor Guggen?
Here.
Councilor Kitt Hill? Here. And Councilor Reed?
Here.
Okay, we have both all council. Um, since this is a new term, we do have some of the offices to perform. Um, I will let Brandon facilitate this part with staff.
Um, Mayor Malcolmson will will go first. And then if you want to go over here to the side and we can just do the oath, I'll take a few photos. Yeah.
Photos this and photos tonight.
Yes.
You're gonna go in a group though, so.
Close ups.
I'm Sage.
I'm Lori Malcolmson.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution.
Do you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution?
And the laws of the United States and the state of Oregon.
And the laws of the United States and the state of Oregon.
And the ordinances and policies of the city of Lafayette.
And the ordinances and policies of the city of Lafayette.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of mayor.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of mayor.
Yes.
What are you doing right now?
Yeah.
Yes, because there's a different oath for the mayor than the councilors.
So, okay, you guys can stand where you're standing.
Oh, Joe wanted to go stand.
All right, please, Rayham?
I?
I.
I, Caleb Wilson.
Jessica Kitt.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States and the state of Oregon. And the laws of the United States and the state of Oregon. And the ordinances and policies of the city of Lafayette. Or ordinances and policies of the city of Lafayette. And I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of counselor.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of counselor.
Um, Counselor Burrow, did your wife get the photo she needed?
I believe so.
Okay. I promise.
I'm probably with the boy, get another one.
She was over there too. Okay, so, um, welcome, Counselor Reed, um, to your first meeting. Um, I might say things that seem, if you don't know what we're, like, sometimes people use the reference of, um, initials for things. Abbreviation, you know, speak up, say, hey, what's going on? But, um, yeah, so, okay, um, citizen input on non-agenda items. This is the time of our meeting that we open up to, um, citizens or others in the public that if it's something that's on the agenda to, um, speak, Brandon, is there anyone signed up? Okay, then I will give a little, yes.
Did you skip number five?
Did I? Oh, I did. Okay, well, we'll finish this part real quick and then we'll go back. Last call for public input. Okay, public input is one, my apologies, let's go back to number five, um, council president's appointment. Brandon, is there a report?
No, well, there's a staff report, but this would be.
For us, okay, no, you're right, I get you. Okay, so, um, since a new term has started, we need to elect somebody who is, will be council president. Um, yeah. So this is point where there's discussion, if there's discussion.
Okay, let you still win.
I vote for Kayla.
Okay, um, any public input on that? Okay, um, any, yeah, so it's up to you guys to, and motion needs to be made or we need to move forward.
I motion to elect Kayla Paulson.
You want to read this?
I don't know, do it.
It's, I mean.
I never do that, right? Or, well, it's just to get on.
I'll do it. I need to, okay, Kayla Paulson, Lafayette City Council President, until your term, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
Okay, any further, this stuff amongst council? Okay, um, normally I'd have Kennedy call for role, but since, is that something you still call for role with this or some sense?
Okay, all right, uh, Council Burrows?
Hi.
Councilor Carswell?
Hi.
Councilor Guggen?
Hi.
Counselor Kitt Hill?
I.
Counselor Reed?
I.
And Counselor Paulson?
Hi.
Okay, um, motion carries, um, welcome as a returning council president.
Um, Council Paulson.
Now we will keep forward in the number, numerical order that I should have done. We've already done number six. Um, so number seven additions or deletions to or from the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I would like to add an executive section. Um, let's move that to number fourteen and move fourteen down to fifteen. It'll be ORS one nine two point.
Wait, ORS, oh, I haven't written.
One nine two point six six zero, uh, two H, to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed.
Okay. As council, you can add it, right? We don't have to.
Well, you would have to revise the agenda.
Objection.
Yeah. Okay. Um, okay, so, yeah, let's move that to number fourteen and fourteen moves down to fifteen. Okay.
Thank you.
Any answer? Any objections to that? Okay.
Nope.
Okay. Um, any other additions or deletions from the agenda that's needed? Okay. Um, now we are going to move on to number eight, which is our consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, um, all in favor or not, please call roll.
Uh, Counselor Reed?
I.
Counselor Kitt Hill?
I.
Counselor Guggen?
Hi.
Councilor Burrows?
Hi.
Councilor Paulson?
Hi.
Counselor Carswell?
Hi.
Okay. Motion carries, consent agenda approved. Now we are moving on to number nine, um, termination of engineering services contract with Corin McLeod, Inc. Brandon?
I move to terminate the engineering service contract with Corin McLeod, effective January first, twenty twenty-five.
Also, effective January, correct, yeah.
January ninth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
Okay, I have on the table a motion to terminate the engineering service contract with Corin McLeod, effective January ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Any further comment from council? Okay, um, if you would please call roll.
Counselor Paulson?
Hi.
Councilor Carswell? Councilor Burrows?
Hi.
Counselor Guggen?
Hi.
Counselor Kitt Hill?
Hi.
Counselor Reed?
Hi.
Okay, motion carries. Um, discussion items, number ten, so, um, first up is our water loss analysis. Um, Brandon, I will ask you to give a report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so, in twenty twenty-two, the city had a water management, management conservation plan um, that was a mandate pretty much from the state because we were losing a lot of water. And at that time, we had about, I think the water loss is about forty-seven percent. Uh, numerous factors, um, considered were the age of the infrastructure meters, um, improper leak detection. Quite a few items. Um, you all met with, uh, GSI a few months ago when we were talking to water rights. Um, down the Alamo and some of the future issues we're going to be seeing with water rights. Well, they were, they're the same consultant that helps us with our water loss analysis. And a few things that I do want to point out, um, you do, you all have the, um, the memo in front of you. I know one of the big things, uh, when I came on board, uh, we're really trying to get that down to ten to fifteen in the, in the, my first three or four years, around about twenty-three percent now. Um, from that, so we're down, almost doubled from where we were when I first came on board. Um, I like to think that a lot of that is all parties, council and city staff, because we did get the funding for the new meters, which we're seeing now, we're actually more accurate when they're being read. Um, and then also, um, we got a new leak detection, uh, so we got the new leak detector, what, six, seven months ago?
Yeah, well, yeah, within the last eight months, for sure.
Yes, and that one, um, I think we've already used it three or four times, and it's like pinpointing leak detection. And we're able to kind of find those leaks before they cause more issue to the system. Um, one thing we weren't doing, um, when we were doing, um, flushing like fire hydrants and like work, we weren't charting the, the water loss because that should be factored in because it shouldn't be a net loss because it's being used as part of operations. So previously, that wasn't being charted either, and we've probably been charting that for about eight months or so, nine months?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, and another issue that obviously, a generation ago, when they established the water meters, they did a rounding down. Um, so if somebody uses three hundred ninety-nine cubic feet, it rounds down to three hundred. So there's, there, there's almost, you know, a hundred cubic feet that aren't captured. That doesn't happen a lot, but you know, if somebody's at three seventy-five or three sixty, they go down to three. And I know we had talked, um, uh, Council President Paulson and I, we had mentioned about a year and a half ago at a meeting, um, that once we get all these meters fully installed in twenty twenty-six, we would like to look at what accurate billing looks like, where we're charging for true consumption and no, no longer estimating and rounding down. Um, if rounding down was to be looked at, I think maybe doing, um, tiers, you know, quarter, quarter increments, not full, if you're using three ninety-eight, you're only being charged with three hundred. Um, and then, um, more.
Doesn't that rounding down eventually catch up though? If you round down to three hundred, but you're starting at three ninety-nine, don't you start at three ninety-nine?
No, because it's going, it's going based on every month's usage, not the pre, so the ending number won't make a difference because you're still going to be, we're going to be looking at just what's used, not the previous, the ending balance and the new balance.
Okay. Okay, wait, sorry, because I know we've had a conversation about this rounding before too. So I want to make sure I understand, since I'm now recalling something, assuming Counselor Burrows. We had asked, so if you did two hundred and ninety-nine and it rounds down, it starts there when it's counting, so those ninety-nine or whatever the, you know, they're already starting with ninety-nine and then it gets added, not that it starts back at zero counting.
Well, no, well, the, the meter doesn't go back to zero.
No, that's correct. Calculate, you know, so if I, if I preloaded it where I've used fifty buckets of water.
Yes.
But if you rounded down, I, those fifty buckets get calculated into the.
Well, yeah, well, yeah. Well, yeah, they get calculated into water distribution and the numbers, but in terms of chargeable water, it's not chargeable water because every month when we go out, we're looking at how many cubic feet of water we've used. So if they use three ninety-nine, yeah, we're going to put that on the meter, but when you look at the water bill, it shows you the cubic hundred feet.
And then that ninety-nine doesn't get added to the next.
Technically, it's cut on the next.
No.
That's what, that's what I.
That's what we were told.
Yeah. Maybe you, maybe it's.
Yeah, the resident still gets charged for that usage the following month because the meters keeps going up and up and up. Um, is what it doesn't account for, it doesn't account for the water loss for rounding down for that month. So that's what we're seeing, maybe that little bit higher percentage in our water loss every month is because we're rounding down and not reading the true meter reading, meter reader, meter read number.
So Greg, if I may, for example, if somebody ended up at three ninety-nine, they're getting charged for three hundred. If the next month they were on vacation, shot the water off, they're four oh one, they're, so they're that ninety-nine from three ninety-nine is still being charged for.
No.
No.
That was the problem with it.
Really?
Because with the old meters, they weren't as accurate, so that's why I recommended when we got all the new water meters in, it needed to become accurate.
So how does it know? How do you know what the starting number is then for the next month?
Because we put it in.
So. Physically put it in.
Yeah, like, so like, when, when they're reading the meters, they come back and then, you know, Jamie and the, and the team, they download the water report. And then they, that, that water report.
So it's like seven hundred and last month was three twenty-two, it's seven hundred minus three twenty-two.
So would we put in at three ninety-nine for the starting for the next month?
Yes.
For the read.
But so you're, you are saying it starts at three ninety-nine.
Okay.
As soon as I hit one, then I've done a hundred.
I see.
I see.
But when we get our consumption report per month, it shows three hundred and.
Yes. But if you take an average over three months' consumption, that would be a lot closer number than taking a one-month picture of it. Okay.
That's what I was saying, the, the resident still gets charged for that because now they're starting at three ninety-nine.
Right.
The following month, not at that three hundred that they got charged for.
Exactly.
Okay, then that's what.
I think we're talking this.
And that, and that actual water loss is factored into the production numbers as well, yeah, so.
If you looked at water loss for one month, which we get the report, I know, I know that, but, but if you took a three-month report, it would, it would balance out a little more. Because you would have that ninety-nine captured the next month, which you called a loss last month.
Yeah, because it would say like, all right, so this month was three hundred, um, we went to three fif, we went to three ninety-nine, we rounded down to three hundred in the billing system, the meter will show three ninety-nine, but it's not going to be made up for that the next month because you're starting at three ninety-nine so that if you lost forty-nine cubic feet, that's not being accounted for in the next bill.
Exactly.
So. So that's why I talk, and that's why I've been asking some other cities who, how, how they, how they've been able to transition because it is a sticker shock at first, because you're getting real numbers, you're no longer rounding down because then it also affects your sewer charges in January because then we also use the sewage based off of the consumption of the water in the colder months.
Brandon, based on the numbers you and I put together for the, for the water rates, are these captures necessary for debt obligations?
In terms of this, well, this, this has a lot of nothing to do with that because.
No, no, I, I understood, but like, the, the recapture, is, is it necessary for, for debt obligations? I mean, like, is, is the recapture necessary to hit?
No, not really, because, I mean, I mean, the, the recapturing is just more for us for water loss.
Yeah.
And that's why, and the big, one of the biggest issues with charting that water loss before I got here was, and, and no offense to staff before, but there just wasn't a, a prerogative, hey, chart whatever you're using when you're going out there and, and cleaning out the hydrants or if you're doing work or water, or water leak repair, none of that was being charted for.
Right.
So now we're having that, so it's, it doesn't really have a dollars and cents thing to it when it comes to the water rates. But when it comes to water production and water usage, yes, which ultimately aligns with the water conservation plan because we got the hand slap, hey, you're losing way too much water.
Right.
There's an issue here, and that's when the state came and mandated us to do that.
I understand, I was just trying to understand the financials.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, the financial effect, we, we get the raw, the raw dollar amount. And, so, yeah, so there's a few more things still going on. As you see in the staff report, we have some deliverables. Um, the estimated completion date, uh, eliminate overflows at the storage tank, that'll obviously with the new reservoir and everything, that'll be up and, up and going soon. Uh, the service meters, uh, where we have probably about sixty-five, seventy percent.
I'd say that's a pretty good, pretty good estimate, yeah. I was talking with the, with the team, um, a couple of weeks ago and the rate that we're going every month on installing these new meters, uh, by this time next year, I won't guarantee you, but if we continue with this pace that we've been on, uh, we will be one hundred percent complete with radio reads being installed.
Which will be, save a lot of time because then you wouldn't have to walk house to house, you just drive by.
It does, I mean, yes, we can probably get more in, but we have a timeframe every month from the first to the fifteenth, which I think you've all been read in on that. So that kind of slows the process down a little bit, and we can't just go out, you know, the third week of the month and go put meters in if it goes past the fifteenth.
Yeah. Um, incorporate the flushing volumes, which we mentioned, um, is being done. The copper line leak detection evaluation, uh, while the inventory's been done, there'll be more deliverables coming from the feds and the state regarding implementation of getting rid of all those copper lines. Obviously, all the copper lines, leaks, pinhole leaks, you know, um, gaskets, those, um, as, as the lines age, um, they're more prone to pinhole leaks. And then the leak detection, uh, surveys that we do, um, the well ten meter, the utility bill rounding, and then, uh, testing the master meters triannually, which are going to start here, uh, next year. So, um, I feel pretty good. Um, it's not where we need to be, obviously, but I think in the two years that, uh, we've all been working together, we've made some serious strides from the forties because we were one of the worst in the state. And now we're kind of in that middle pack, so.
It's concerning.
Yeah.
Can I add?
Oh, yeah, yeah, go for it.
So, so one thing that I've done, it's not on here, um, I've asked the crew, these, these ten master meters that we read every month are read on the first of every month. And so we're taken from the first to the first. So now I have asked the crew to read first of the month and the last of the month. Because if we read on the first every month, we're not getting, we're, we're, we're adding one extra day in on that water loss usage. So if we read from the first and then hit it on the last day of the month, we're getting that full true month, we're not adding that extra day in. But we might see a little bit of percentage drop by doing that. Um, I'll probably know a little bit more next month. This is something that I've just recently implemented into the way that we read these master meters every month.
I appreciate that. Okay, um, Brandon, is there any more to your report?
No, I mean, it's, it's fairly simple. I mean, it's a pretty short memo. If anybody has any other questions, you can reach out or does anything I can ask you for you tonight?
Is there any further council discussion needed? A, any public statement on it?
It's kind of a bummer that as we replace all these meters, the end user just notices a higher bill, you know.
Well, and a lot of those analog meters, um, they said twenty to twenty-five years. I think these are right at about twenty-five years or so. So, um, you, you start to see that sundial deteriorate when it comes to reading, so, um, but as technology improves, you know, after billing, it's just, you know.
Yeah, that is good, but what occurred to me was, uh, not, everybody's paying the same. So, I know I didn't read correctly and you had a lower water bill, but now it's reading correctly and you're paying the same as, you know, Joe does, so.
Yep, okay, okay, then, uh, let's move on, um. So we are on to appointment to boards. Brandon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, um, recently, we had, um, uh, a term expired, Ms. Marilyn Duvall. Um, she made, she made me aware, and I think Mayor Malcolmson as well, that she doesn't, um, intend to reapply. And then we also hadn't filled the seat from when Jeffrey Olson resigned early this year, so we do have two budget committee, uh, seats open. Um, and outside of that, um, our planning commission is now full, I think the first time since I've been here.
Yes.
And then, um, so all we really have open now is two budget committee members. Um, and those, uh, terms would be three-year terms and those would expire, uh, in December twenty twenty-seven.
And, um, so we also have a new application that's come in, but I would like to, um, please put out a call for applications, if that's possible, Brandon?
Thirty days?
Yes, thirty days.
Were we going to add that one on the board? Up front.
Yeah, I think we can make something on it, but we'll put it on all of our other media channels and the newspaper and.
Yeah.
Website, yes.
Yeah, so push it out, okay. Um, any council that, names of somebody that you might, perhaps ahead, please encourage them to fill out an application and, um, I will hold any appointments for thirty days to give time for any other things to come in. Okay. Um, council rules? Oh, wait, I'm going to backtrack for two seconds because I was thinking, add it, it's next month at council rules. Please also think about, um, speaking of boards and stuff, um, I was talking with Brandon that, um, I asked him if there was, was, uh, council should have left, were there any entities? Like, for instance, Counselor Paulson is on the LDA and comes to Carswell, I don't know if you remember because it's been dormant, he's on.
The Yamhill, um, Regional Water Association.
Yep.
Yeah.
He's the secretary.
Um, that there might be other, yeah. We, we pointed them, like.
Very busy.
I'm on the parkway.
Uh, Sage, you are?
I am.
Oh. But not, not from our appointment of you onto it, right?
No, the, the county manager.
Um, that there might be other, uh, local um, groups, um, or entities that we might feel that um, is important for us to keep tabs on and that perhaps, um, for instance, I follow a lot with, um, the League of Oregon Cities and, uh, Middle School District, but we have other um, things like, um, Counselor Paulson does LDA that we might not, it might not be an appointment onto their board, but just something where we could delegate some, hey, I mean, keep tabs on Yamhill County Commissioners and it doesn't mean you have to go to each meeting, but keep a track of things, they're going to alert council, like, hey, this is going on outside our little bubble. So I would like maybe, um, when we go over council rules next month, if, if over the month you think of any, it doesn't mean you have to take it, just, and I'm thinking like even like the sheriff's office, Brandon is, um, represents our city as, well, the whole county as one of the city, um, voices. So he's keeping tabs on that, but just if there's other places that we might not have to keep tabs on, Matt Water and Light, things that we might have a stake in, so.
Just to be clear, I mean, while we're thinking about the council rules, but separate there from.
Yes, while we're thinking of it separate there from, ju, sorry, well, I, yeah, so, um, it's good timing is how that's the only correlation.
Absolutely.
So, um, yeah, so I'm just putting that out there and, um, and those that are appointed to something, if you no longer want that, please let Brandon know ahead of time. I appreciate knowing ahead of time too, so that we can list those specifically to, to us. Okay, sorry, now, and the other discussion on, um, appointments to boards. Okay, um, council rules, uh, Brandon?
Yeah, um, I, you missed budget discussion.
No, I didn't, oh, budget, I am so sorry. I have my old, I have my old glasses and they're. Um, okay, ten C, budget discussion, Brandon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So just to kind of get everybody's mind, um, I know it feels like we just finished the budget six, seven months ago, but um, here in April, we're going to start having our meetings. I'll bring some proposed meeting dates, uh, the next meeting for April. Uh, but I also want us to kind of get into, uh, budget mode, project mode. Um, we're coming up on hopefully a pretty, um, pretty well-completed pavement plan for this fiscal year. Um, but as we wind down some big projects like the reservoir and the water meters and major, major infrastructure improvements, need to start looking at other major infrastructure improvements, and I mentioned those on the Stanford report, um, with, uh, the wastewater treatment plant upgrades being one. And then, um, the Canyon View Pump Station, the other. Um, for those who may have not, um, read or really, um, dived into the weekly notes, uh, last week, we had an overflow of, uh, last weekend um, over at the Canyon View Pump Station. Um, it's kind of on the back burner for a couple of years. I think it even precedes me. Um, but it's only been at one pump and it should be operating at two pumps. We're working on getting a second pump and um, it may be a little costly, but that's something we're going to need to, we're going to need to have ASAP, especially now because DEQ is made aware of the, of the system overflow and they're probably going to say, hey, you need to make sure you get this done ASAP. Um, and it was just one of those things that was put to the back burner, um, because it was, it's been so expensive. So one of the things we're looking at doing now, um, we're going to be, we met with Gordon, the engineer, this week talking about, um, the bare minimums, which Greg and I are working on, um, getting a second pump. Also, there's some access issues, um, if, if you've ever been by the Canyon View Pump Station, it's pretty, it's pretty slow, it, it, there's, there's not much traction. So, um, what we're looking at doing, since we do have money, um, for street repairs a little bit, when we go out for bids for Bridge Street, since it'll be mobilized and it's, it'll probably be like a five or six thousand dollar job, we're going to have them put some, uh, rock and, um,
asphalted.
Asphalt, the accessway, because, um, those pitches that I sent in the weekly updates last week, um, I mean, it's hard, like, they're literally, and it's little easement, and there's not much traction, there's dirt everywhere. Um, they're having to navigate through it and it's not the best for, not the best for the city crews and for safety. Um, but that's something we definitely have to get look. Um, but that's something we definitely have to get looked at, um.
That's a, that's a good idea to pair it with Bridge Street.
Yeah. Um, not to freak anybody out, but we did involve some preliminary numbers on, uh, what the pump station, just what the pump station needs to get to be where it should be. And, uh, remember, we can't use SDCs. Probably looking at probably seven hundred and fifty, eight hundred thousand dollars, if not more. Um, so that's something that we need to probably look at here in the next few years. It's not gonna happen next budget season. Um, but as we go through the evaluation, we'll probably wanna start charting that path here in the next couple of years. I think once we get the second pump installed, that should kind of hold us over while we start looking at that, but then that was also one of the reasons why, um, I'm gonna be working with Deb on maybe hopefully getting a sewer rate study, um, as we go into the next fiscal year. Because that's gonna, between that pump station being done and then the facilities plan, a lot of those deliverables coming out of that are gonna need to be addressed in the sewer rate study. So anything else on the pump station that I can, that I may have glanced over or didn't go too far into?
I know, I think you pretty well covered it. That, that lift station's very old. Um, it's been, uh, Band-Aid in the past. Uh, it was designed to run off of two suction lift pumps, uh, we've gotten by with just one submersible pump in there. Um, and so that, to get us by until we can actually totally go back in and rejuvenate it up to where it should be, uh, we're planning on just putting another submersible pump in there to coincide with the existing, uh, submersible pump.
So a couple Band-Aid in that probably?
Yeah, it's just a very, very old, um, aging lift station.
DEQ is okay with that plan?
DEQ is fine as long as we get a second pump in there.
Yes.
They're not fine with just the one pump being in there right now.
And it's, and it's been one pump for quite a while.
It's, for as long as I've been here, there's only been one pump in there, yeah.
And if we put it off and Band-Aid it and Band-Aid it and Band-Aid it, we're gonna get over that million dollar mark.
Yeah.
And then that goes to the voters, which it's not that I don't want them to have a say in what their money is spent on, but.
What, uh, how many houses are retired?
It doesn't serve very many houses. It only serves just basically the Canyon View community.
And then a few on the outskirts right there.
Yes.
I mean, just based on what I know about historical cost of pump stations from recent events, is it worth looking into the cost of a new pump station versus fixing this up?
I think that's where, that's where Gordon is, has kind of discussed, it's probably better just to kind of build a new one than to rehab it. But with, with it not serving.
What's up? That's close to new pump station numbers.
I think that was what Gordon's, kind of main intention was, um, was to just basically put a whole new one in, um, for the seven, you know, hundred thousand dollars, which basically would mimic what's going in out of Meadowbrook Phase Five.
So.
It's just a pre-built.
So the numbers that you had for us, is that for the fix or for the new one?
That would be for, uh, pretty much a new one.
So I think we need to find out the cost for a fix.
Correct, and these are just early numbers, like, so this is just.
Ahead of it, so we have to tackle, we have the numbers we need in front of us.
Correct, yeah, we, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll have both, we'll have fix rehab, how long that we have lifespan, lifespan, and then what it'll look like to do a new one, so. Um, so, yeah, so.
Let me ask my first question. So what's the timing?
Uh, we're hearing in the future, but are we talking the future this year, twenty twenty-five, or? Are you talking about doing the project?
They, doing whatever we need to do to satisfy the DEQ at this time.
Oh, no, yeah, we're working on that now, since we're, we're.
Already implies.
Yeah, we're working on that now, but in terms of.
Talking about the new one is downstream.
Yes, cause we, we, we have to find out how we're gonna fund it. We're gonna have to do a sewer rate study. We have to figure out with facilities plan, so.
So if I had to share the second pump, so it's first DEQ issues now, we're gonna have to figure out a long-term solution down there.
Correct, yeah, correct.
And then the, the paving of it, the reason we're doing it so soon, is if we ever need to get down in there, until we redo the whole Canyon View Lift Station, we gotta have access to get equipment down there or a vehicle, which we don't have at this time.
And also, so we should, a couple with the Bridge Street project as well.
Yeah, yeah.
On Dr. S.
Total, total sense, yes.
Yeah, and, um, and just for context, uh, last week, we had, last weekend, we had twenty-four, seven, around the clock coverage from Friday night till about early Monday morning. And it had to be trained staff because, I mean, even though nothing really happened, we were, once we reported that there was a system overflow, we cannot leave that unless it's fixed. And then the pump that we got on Friday didn't work out, so we had to wait until Monday to get a pump. So we literally had staffing twenty-four, seven for the, for that whole weekend. And that, obviously, that eats up costs and overtime and insurance, so that obviously.
But it keeps us in line.
Yeah, so, and from what Greg's, I couldn't be from wrong, um, hey, put the second pump in, you should be good. Gordon mentioned, well, lately they've been finding people for that. Hopefully that's not the issue, cause we're already working on getting it ordered. And I hope we try to avoid that, so. But I will keep you all up to date, up to speed with anything I hear.
And then it, like, as you mentioned, we need to start thinking about it or budgeting.
Yeah, yeah, Gordon, um, Gordon and us, we, we met this week and we're gonna meet again here soon, so.
Can I correct you on, on something?
Go ahead.
So the reason we had to, had to man it twenty-four, seven, um, was when we had that, that overflow, uh, we realized at that time that the auto dialer was not working at that time either. Um, so we are working on replacing the auto dialer. And if you don't have some sort of an alarm system on any of your facilities,
You have to.
whether it's water, wastewater, DEQ or OHA, then requires you to staff that facility twenty-four, seven in lieu of your alarm system.
Yeah.
So it's just a toss in there, water pump you get from Home Depot or something?
No.
Well, offering to do the.
No, I totally wouldn't.
Um, any other, since we're talking about budget discussion, any other big shockers we're gonna see?
No, um, I, I wanted you all, if there's anything near and due to your hearts, I'd rather start working on that with the blessing of the council, if there's anything you can think of next month, you bring it back and say, I'll, I'll have a follow-up, anybody wanna, what, step, look into anything? I just, last year's budget process went pretty smooth, I thought. And I wanna make sure it's still smooth again, so I would hate to say, hey, let's look into this with a week and two to spare, and then we're doing a lot of legwork, so if there's something really big that we really wanna discuss, um, I'd rather know about it, so I can kind of put the legwork in and put the, the data behind it, so we're not scrounging at the last minute.
Um, so there's not like grants or anything we can try to apply for?
For the pump station? No, we, we, we don't have any, anything in front of us to do that, so where we can say, hey, here's what we have, can you help us? I'm going to Capitol Day, um, LOC here on the twenty-seventh, and I'm gonna meet with Rep Elmer and a couple, and a couple other people, just, hey, this was kind of going on and we're gonna be needing some help soon and hopefully try to lobby a little bit when I'm there at the Capitol.
For what it's worth, before you dive into your budget, it did go smoothly last year, but a lot of that was because of how lean you kept things. Before we get into that, so.
Thank you.
I'm excited for Bridge Street, actually.
Yeah, um, and I, and I did talk with, uh, Gordon and he said, March, we'll probably, we'll have bids ready. So we should have some bids ready in March. I was hoping to go out in January, February, but with the reservoir stuff, it didn't line up that way with the workflow, so, um, we'll hopefully have something in front of you all for Wednesday. Um, not Wednesday, March, that'll be, um, great. Um, I don't know, I'm gonna look at it. I know last year we paid some additional debt. I wanna see how this year goes, what we're looking at, um, before I suggest that. I know last year, not got one payment, but wanna make sure things are gonna go okay with everything with Mac Water and Light. Interest rates are going down a little bit, so before I propose that, I wanna make sure things are gonna see how the new administration comes on board, see how that fluctuates and see if that's gonna be a, a story to tell for the budget, so. Um, so, yeah, long story short, anything you can think of, um, as we get into the budget season, let's talk ahead of time, so we're not bringing up at the last minute where it makes you.
When we get to that discussion next month, can you let us know what the LGIP is for purposes of Mac Water?
It just went down to one point seven, uh, a few days ago.
You may remember our interest rate, Mac Water and Light is two percent plus the LGIP rate, so. But now with the new amendment that Brandon and I worked out with Mac Water and Light, we now we now have flexibility to adjust that each year, just like they do, so if it goes down, we can adjust it.
Like, we can revisit it too.
Okay. It's not, it's not one.
Right, so, I mean, it's, if it can get down to four percent before, before we start talking budget, I mean, that's, uh, one, almost two percent savings over last year. So fingers crossed, but yes, I'll have that.
Keep our eye on, yeah.
Um, oh, go ahead.
It just occurred to me, and this may not be the bright part of the conversation, but we had the traffic change around the school, and then I don't know if we ever had a follow-up on that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be talking about that here in a little bit.
Oh, okay. I just jumped in.
Okay.
It just occurred to me.
It's not a budget thing. Okay, Brandon, any more on budget, did you touch the wastewater treatment plant?
Well, yeah, just the facilities, that's gonna be done and the door, that kind of there.
Okay, any further council discussion on budget discussion? Any public input? Okay, let's move on now to ten D council rules, uh, Brandon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, um, with every new council term comes just a revision or looking at the council rules. Um, the last time it was looked at, um, was in twenty twenty-three. Um, nothing really changed from what I can recall, that the last time anything substantial was done was in twenty twenty-one. By twenty twenty-three, I think it was just some verbiage, uh, some, some grammar cleanup, that precedent had changed, um. But outside of that, yeah, this is kind of y'all's kind of guiding document on how the meetings are go, how the meetings are run, um, decorum, all that kind of stuff, this is your kind of guiding document. It's not the constitution like the charter, but this is how you all kind of police yourselves and, um, stay, stay afloat, so.
And this is going on next month for us to, this is just bringing it before us, saying, hey, please read through this. And you, you would like, if there is any substantial stuff that someone would like to discuss, like, and on that, so that.
An email, and then I can make it as part of the, the staff report.
And, yeah, okay, which also allows you to gain, gather and information, but, yeah.
Yeah, and I think this will probably be, um, Council Burrows and, and Kit Hill and Council Reed's first time really diving into this.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, uh, and then now that Council Carswell's been here for two years, he may have a little bit more of experience to, if there's anything he has questions with or anything.
Me too.
I know you, but you're always in this.
I know. I know the rules, but I didn't get it, you know, when we changed them last time, or didn't change them, I was brand new to it.
Yeah.
Okay, any further council discussion or questions on what's being asked of us this next month? Which is to come prepared for a discussion, because you already know the matter. Okay, any public input? Okay, we will move forward, um, on to department reports. So Brandon, I will let you facilitate the reports section.
Awesome, um, standard monthly reports, um, do you have Greg here, does any questions? Um, next month, I'm gonna have, uh, I'm gonna try to get Chief Tim here, um, so I can introduce him formally to, um, Council Reed, and then also have, um, our code officer, Robert.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Um, but unless anybody had any questions on the reports, I was gonna go over a couple of notes.
Um, no, I just see, I see that, um, our fine deputy Morris is here. He has, now, yeah, um, we don't get to see that often because you now have to give verbal reports. But since you're here, is there anything you wanted to mention?
Yeah, things are going good, just, uh, took somebody to jail, so.
But we're all accountable now.
Well, I guess, unless we have any questions while you are here, um, the past, uh, since Monday, we've had the new traffic change, um, with the elementary school.
Okay.
Obviously, it was delayed a little bit, um, so we kicked it off with the first day back at school. Um, outside of a few just pullovers and some education, it seems like it's going pretty smooth.
Um, yeah, I couldn't touch that in my mayor's report too.
We've, we haven't got any feedback, um, officially to the official channels, like we mentioned, I got a few, um, uh, people who showed, who expressed some concerns before it actually happened, and I said, well, let's wait until it happens. And then we'll, you know, I said, hey, we have a public meeting on, on February, so next month we'll be kind of evaluating. If I have any complaints, suggestions or anything, I'll bring this to the council, and then we can formally say, hey, are we gonna keep on going forward with this? Or are we going to, um, cease this trial effort? Um, but it seems to go pretty smooth, um, just re-education. Um, thank you, Mayor, for helping me out on Monday. Uh, with that, I was out there as well on Monday, and then kind of Robert and the police have kind of been working on the afternoons. So it's gone pretty smooth and haven't really heard anything of the feedback.
No emails, nothing?
No.
No, we got, we got some emails before, but I was like, hey, this is just here, like, let's.
Well, since I had it on my mayor's report, cause it was a substantial project I helped on, but since you're mentioning it now, um, yeah, it's, I haven't, I'm on site daily and I haven't heard anything from the teachers, even though prior I had heard things from the teachers, um, I've spent some time getting to talk with, um, Deputy Mead hands-on, um, cause I've seen him both while we were, um, lagging traffic and also just in the parking lot. And, um, he, he mentioned that he just likes to load the traffic also. Um, and he hasn't gotten any even those that he has pulled over to give warnings, not official warnings, but heads-ups, information, um, maybe they're known or they're like, it hasn't been any confrontation from what I've understood. So we will bring it back, like, um, Brandon said, but I just, um, wanted to, and my mayor's probably was gonna think, just city staff were, when I agreed to like jump in and be part of it, um, my, the agreement was with really good communication and, um, rolling it out. And so I think on the city's end, we did a fantastic job.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, appreciate that.
Yeah.
Um, so due to some staff turnover in the audit office, they did ask if it was okay to file an extension with the state for that. Um, we said, yeah, there was no issue, but we'll still have every, all of our audit, um, our audit numbers before we start talking to budget, so hopefully we'll have them here, uh, before we talk to budget as well. Um, Jamie is out for a couple of weeks, so if there's any stuff that comes up with that myself, or Kenny will be able to navigate that, but I don't see them finishing up until probably the early part of March, cause we did ask for an extension until the end of March, so, um. Um, I'm gonna be meeting with, um, Sheriff Elliott here with the, with the rest of the city manager here at the end of the month to go over some of the staffing concerns that came up at, um, in December's meeting, but also, uh, their budget forecast that they'll be getting from the county administration. Um, as a follow-up, Sheriff Elliott will be here as requested from you all, uh, next month, cause he'll have some numbers to kind of talk about, um, so we can talk about police services and not yet, and how that looks going into the next, uh, fiscal year.
Brandon?
Yes.
Do you want, uh, do the stuff to wait till next month, or do you want any?
If there's something that.
I have no interest in increasing our patrol here.
Okay, I second that motion. I'd like to be part.
Was an emotion?
If you, I know I'm shocking, um.
It's just, it's just a city manager meeting.
Does that mean I'm not allowed?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's administration.
Yeah, it's administrative function.
Okay, um, I, I looked at the information that, um, I was on council at the time, but the Sheriff Elliott raised and the, um, usage of the rural deputies. I, for us to determine what we gotta do there, we're gonna need to know what, how long it takes to do the task, you know, he listed out the task force real nice. We're gonna need to know how long each one of us takes, which are the ones that the rural deputy has to respond to and why. So that was the three questions I came up with that I thought I'd pass on, that we're gonna need that data to be able to figure out how we're gonna best utilize our staff. It looks like a whole lot of time spent on traffic citation. So we wanna probably determine how much traffic cop we wanna buy. Right now, we're buying three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars worth, and I have no interest in making that five hundred and forty, which is what the sheriff indicated we go to.
Well, I have interest in making sure that we have evaluated it correct.
Yeah, I was just passing along my, my, my two cents with, I looked at, I said, we're gonna need this data, and the data that he was looking at didn't provide that. So we need that generated. And I'd like to see it.
Um, well, we're talking data then. I, I was, uh, interested in the data, how many calls are being answered monthly compared to what it used to be, to what it is now. And that would, uh, indicate that maybe we do need another.
Yeah, yeah, well, he did provide that.
You speak of the town as ground.
Yes.
Yeah, he did provide a, a listing of the data, uh, for the last three, four years, and we're at the level, it's been increasing, but we're, our level in the most recent year was the same as two years ago. So, eh, yeah, and the more you grow, but it looks like there's some, I mean, I, I'm new here, so that's why I'm starting to try to gather information. There's some of what they do that has to be done. There's some of what they do that is our choice, that's variable. How much do we wanna put them out there to do traffic tickets? So there are things that we have the choice over. I just don't know which is which, and I don't know how much time they're spending on each, and I, I just don't have the information that I need to be able to make a decision.
So it sounds a bit before the sheriff's contract comes up, everybody, take a good look at the contract, make sure we understand controls versus non-control.
Brandon, is that, um, a document you can resend out to? Um, or council, if you need a copy of that? Let's let Brandon know.
While we're on the subject, in the budget that he had, there was twelve thousand dollars for uniforms. While we're on the subject, in the budget that he had, there was twelve thousand dollars for uniforms for the year. Man, you guys dress nice, huh? I'd like to understand that. I I I, you know, the contract looked like it covered everything for them.
Yeah.
It does, yeah.
But the uniforms?
Yes.
The control here full time, yeah.
And the safety gear, all the same.
Well, I mean, the contract, I thought the contract when I read indicated that the county covers all of those kinds of expenses.
Okay, I guess I don't understand.
We're paying three seventy-nine plus twelve thousand. No, 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 it's all part of it. Yeah, our our flat rate is three seventy-nine a year.
So let's do this, Brandon.
It was definitely broken out separate.
If, okay, so if anyone. Ha, we definitely need to have a conversation if it comes back to us that we.
It's probably within April, but let's, can we circulate the contract for both?
Yes.
Yeah. I think it does need a conversation, absolutely.
And then if you have, yeah.
Yeah, Jeff, you know, it's a big step function, so we go up a hundred and seventy.
If there's any documents that council needs to stay abreast on those, please also um request those from Brandon. Um, but yeah, if we can just um circulate that contract just so. There's no, hey, I didn't see it. Well, it's been sent to all of us.
Just be clear, I'm sure i- it's it's in the minutes from previous, but if we could just circulate it for.
Yeah, it's not, it's online, it's not checked, yeah, I'll make it.
This is a, okay, and then.
For no increase in police. Absolutely, no increase in police.
Okay, so. Where, well, that was, because you're giving report on.
Yes, um, so uh Sheriff Elliott will be here next meeting, um. So as you know, we've been trying to hire a director to replace Chad the past six months. We we have not, we have fallen short in finding quality candidates. Um, what I'm looking at doing, so we we still need two full-timers at the wastewater plant. We've made tremendous waves this last 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 year, twenty twenty-four, we had no issues with the EQ. Um. With that being said, um, we have talked to Chad and Chad is willing to stay on, um, at least for the next five to six years as our signer. Um, as we get people trained up and we get, we get a few wastewater ones, twos and threes, and they go through the process. Um, with that being said, I would like your support instead of hiring a director right now. Um, I'd like to bring somebody, a current employee who shows the interest to go to full-time into the wastewater. And bringing in another entry-level maintenance worker. Um, Greg has been doing a great job. Um, I mean, he can have forever. Um, I think he's kind of, he's matured a lot in his position since Chad's left and came on board. And I, instead of using, so we we would have cost savings on the salary side, so that's a big, you know, probably close to thirty. Plus thousand on the cost, just on the, on the cost-saving side. Um. I just don't want to eliminate that position because we do need to have that second full-time person at the wastewater plant and we're just not finding it.
We just still need Chad.
Well, because he has, because he has to be the signer because he's the only certified.
So you're saying that I'm asking, eh, because it kind of sounded like it could go either way, but I just want to clarify for the record.
Was out.
But you still want to bring on and it to help with the second position?
Yes, because because Chad, uh, it's only like fifteen hundred bucks a month.
Yeah.
And he he signs over and it's much cheaper than we were paying Mark and the guy before Mark that was here. Um, and he works with us a lot more. He has kind of, you know, he worked here for years, so he has, you know, he he wants to see us thrive. Um, but there's also somebody who I know who really wants to do um wastewater, but it would be hard to pull them back.
Unless we filled.
And yes. I'm sorry.
Internally.
The person for the wastewater, yes, they've been working on wastewater, but they they've come to both me and Greg and it said, I want to do nothing but what, I want to do wastewater, I love wastewater. You don't get that a lot.
No.
Um, but I also know if we do that and we have Chad's commitment.
In my mind.
Yes.
I know that you're asking for our support, but I also understand that as policymakers, you you don't commit to the personnel.
Correct.
I I I appreciate you asking this, but my question is, can you tell me what the advantage is long-term?
The advantage long-term is we'll have Chad here working with the two. As they go through their level one, level two and eventual level three. Um, long-term, that would probably mean we may not need a director position because we would actually have what we needed all along. And the way we, the way we made, the way we, Chad kind of fell into us because. We didn't have to pay him what, I'm gonna have to pay other people who are applying right now, like a lot more money with a lot more experience. Um, and people who I think are just coming in for a paycheck and they're gonna leave. When somebody comes and tells me, hey, I want to do wastewater. And I want to do a career in it because it's good money and I know I know what I'm doing. So that person can be long, that person long-term can be somebody, and especially this person was very big on the last union agreement. And making sure that we're taking care of the people who may want to be here long-term, so I definitely see these people in wastewater being here long-term.
So is my summation correct or incorrect? When I said you're you're telling me the long-term advantage is lesser turnover. And a lesser payroll line item.
Correct.
Okay, and then less risk for fines with DEQ.
Yes, because 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 Chad's not gonna sign, he has to come here once, he's here at least once a month.
Until we have, until we have somebody ready in the.
Yes, and that may be, I mean, and Greg may do that in five, it may turn into being Greg in five or six years. I don't think that's gonna happen.
And uh, counselor kid.
I was just curious, what what can we do to get Greg to the same certification that Chad has? If you, what would you like to get to the point where you're certified the way Chad is?
I have quite a few certifications already.
Okay, let's, wait, I want to pause real quick, sorry. Let's not put a staff member on.
And that question, that question would be aimed at Brandon too.
Yeah, that's what.
Brandon, what can we do to support Greg if he's interested in getting certified the way that Chad is, so that we won't need Chad anymore? We love you, Chad, but.
So what I was probably gonna do is because um. When Chad came in, I know, I realized how much work was there because I kind of had to bring everything under one because it was separate under wastewater and then public works. Um, I have asked Greg to pick up a lot of slack, things he didn't do in the past. So what I would do is similar to what I did with Jamie when I did my reorg, um, instead of making him the public works supervisor, I would make him the public work manager. Gives a little bit of a better title, makes us, eh eh, we're gonna get to make, commit to him with a little bit more, obviously, in in pay. But it's gonna be one of those things where he'll take on a bigger responsibility on some of the admin shift that he he's kind of taken over since Chad's left. Um, and that'll help him out, that'll help bring us somebody else in board and then.
And some of, so some of that workload that doesn't have to be connected to the certification.
Correct.
The record had, we are able to use somebody that has been here a while and knows it.
Right.
But we, how do we know after we get them all trained up, Chad? They don't just leave.
We don't.
We don't.
We don't.
We don't.
There's no like agreement, you can make it.
No.
No, I mean, I think we've been talking about that during the negotiations, we we can't really do that.
Uh, Greg, did you wanna share more?
Yeah, I guess to to maybe better answer your question. For anybody to get a level three certification, so there's four levels, one, two, three and four, it's time.
Okay.
It's just, it's time on the job.
Okay.
Um, and that's not. Set forth by the city, that's what either Oregon Health Authority sets forth and or DEQ.
It's based on years or hours?
Based on years and based on time spent at that facility. So the way that we're structured now in public works, other than uh one individual right now. That one individual is the only one that is staffed down there five days a week, eight hours a day. So it takes longer.
For anyone else.
For anybody else to get to that length of time to get that level of certification, unless you are staffed down there. All day, every day, eight hours, forty hours a week.
So it goes like a quarter time, like in streets, quarter time on water distribution, quarter time in parks.
Same way we cut, split things up for budget.
Yeah, for, yeah, for, yeah.
So this, this would allow this second individual um. To be able to get that higher level of certification faster than what they are able to get it currently.
And one last thing, sorry, um, met with Recology yesterday um about redoing our franchise agreement to include um the cleanup days. So I have to apply for a grant every year for the cleanup day, even though it's something that we don't have to pay for. So we were talking about the franchise agreement, how we can make sure to do this, I have to fill out a grant every year for something I'm gonna get. And they had mentioned with this whole new styrofoam manufacturer monetary tax that's being passed on and the recycling side. That there's an opportunity for McMinville to get another recycling and discharge center. And now when I mean center, I mean three or four bins. Sure, you know, uh, brush, recycling, et cetera. They came to us with the possibility of Lafayette's at the population, this is a big area. This may be a good opportunity for us to actually place them. Where it's at, I mean, you know, he mentioned ve- veterans area, I mentioned the Little Nook and Cranny by Commons Park. It's not, nothing set in stone, but they said that Lafayette is an ideal place for this because of. How big we are compared to other parts of the city that value that.
Benefit of that would be the located, like, usability.
Usability, hopefully get some.
Do they leave the space that they use for that? Like, is there any?
Oh, that that has been talked about, it was just like, hey, like, would would Lafayette be, and I said, I'd be interested to look at it and to see what it's it's about. But for them to at least think, hey, Lafayette can be this big, so kind of, it kind of makes you feel good regardless of the.
This is gonna move forward, it'll come to us.
Yeah, it would, it would definitely be something that would would come to you all, but I I'd say I'd entertain it because it's, I would hate to turn it down, just, you know.
But when you're talking about grants to franchise agreements.
Yeah.
Dollars and cents.
Yes, correct, 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 correct. So, um, it's not even guaranteed, but there's, they said there's money for another McMinville one, but there's not an act, an ideal location. And with the proximity, I said, cool, let me know what you got, and so he he may throw something out my way, obviously, I'll bring it to you all and we can talk about it.
Okay.
And Elcat Bingo starts again next Friday.
This Friday, right?
Next Friday.
Next Friday.
Yes, so if you want to hear a loud New York Texan call bingo numbers, we'll be back doing it monthly.
Can you calm down this time?
No, no.
Yell that, we're slowing down, speeding up.
But it was fun.
Alright, so that's it for me, thank you so much.
Okay, uh, any council reports? Any counselors have anything to share?
Uh, we have, LDA has a meeting coming up on the thirty-first or. Did it ever, Brandon? I never heard back um from Larry. Did the community center get?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Thirty-first.
Yeah, January thirty-first.
At six P M, right?
Yes.
So in person?
No, I think it's. I think it's six. No, it's gotta be six, yes, because I, yeah.
Okay, appreciate you going to that or.
March meeting, um, just a heads up in case other people are going to be traveling or anything to make sure we have a form. I'm unsure whether or not I'm flying back that Wednesday or Thursday, but are we traveling that week? I'm trying to get back in time, so we're working on that itinerary.
Okay. Um, anything else from counselors?
I've got one pass nod from people in my neighborhood. Um, we kind of went past, Robert Beal's not here. So we've been past the code enforcement. Seems as if we are not enforcing the code on fireworks, and I have gotten calls from several people based on. Um, is it January first is happening?
Yeah, that's a police item.
That's Sheriff.
Sheriff, yeah, okay, just that was my question, is where's, where's the next step? Because we bet people are upset. Thanks.
Hopefully you don't get that all the time, but you may. People call.
Yes, I I know people when they call for fireworks, the sheriff's department is just like, yeah, we're getting those calls everywhere.
Without opening a full discussion, I could, I can share that I had a direct conversation with um Sheriff Elliott. Asking, hey, what is our, what is Yem Hill's? Policy on it, and it's to call, but it gets prioritized in the hierarchy with. Um, everything else that's going on, and so my stance is. It's a sheriff thing, we employ them for that, and so we don't have any.
And honestly, even if we didn't, if we had our own police department, we could have maybe two police officers.
Yeah, no, it's like.
And now we're at the same time, it would be very difficult for them to get to neighborhood to neighborhood to. It's just, it's, I think, on those holidays where that happens, I think as far as priority of enforcement, it's very diff- it's very difficult.
I can understand that.
Yeah, absolutely, but I understand the concern.
We're getting out of control in the neighborhood and the people, you know, it's midnight, everybody's awake then, all the pets are paralyzed and it's two people. It's not like it's hundreds.
Yeah.
All right, thank you for sharing the interaction you had with the community around you. Um, I like to. And when I have those conversations, always, this is my choice, so, end it with. If you want to, I can always share it with council, I have found that they like to hear directly and to put in a public input. Um, okay, any other council? Okay, uh, mayor's report, uh, just quick holiday wrap-up because I am tired of Christmas, although I love Christmas. Um, I ju- we have, uh, we had a great Christmas season, in my opinion, um, wonderful tree lighting. Wonderful um decorating contest, we had thirty-eight participate, participants with over a hundred and fifty votes being sent in. Um, all the money from the prizes were received as water credits. Um, already have somebody wanting to help organize that next year. So I'm all about, you know, the community jumping in and not being a one-man show. Uh, the caroling night, thank you to the counselors that showed up. I appreciate the um sharing with that. That event for counselors that didn't know was a, not necessarily a dry run, but a. Trial run of our new agreement to allow alcohol at certain events, and so it was a nice way. Um, the Highland Valley Brewery knew it wasn't gonna be a moneymaker event for them, it was more of a, let's test this out. Um.
He had fantastic interaction, he was very good.
Oh, yes, very good. Yeah, so.
That was really neat.
Um, with that said, we have already started planning with um. LDA, Elcat Fire Department, last night Brandon pulled us together for a meeting to recap and also move forward, and we will be streamlining. Some of all the events that we're now doing to, we reshuffle it to. Um, tie things back in, and although the tree, um, we will be moving the tree lighting back up to Joel Perkins. But as Christmas gets closer, eh, the details of the events will all be planned, but um.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
Um, will you, can you, can you give me some time? I forgot to do one more thing.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, there, I feel privileged that there is an article in Enterprise Magazine, which is the quarterly magazine put out by Sedcor. That goes, um, try county out, um, as mentioned, uh, they, last one that asked if they could interview me on. How public and private works together and the snowball effect of businesses, and so it was a. Um, and I started to let me know if you want a copy, but there's also a copy attached to the mayor's report, the whole mayor's report. Um, city will have that on file. Um, speaking of public and private. One of the things in it was the zone, but it happens to be that this was the year or the month that they sent you guys all a thank you for. Um, the grip, so. And even though I work with that, that was actually my boss's doing. Um, so I, I personally have a. Seen and witnessed um the stuff that has been sent, and I know that uh Council Carswell's kids and. Council Burrows bring kids play with all the stuff. Um, so that was from them. Um, Brandon already touched on the traffic changes. Um. Well, I have a meeting coming up with a resident who is very interested in getting the Spanish community and information. For them, whether it needs to happen privately or something that we do as a city, we're looking to connect her with.
May I just say, the traffic change, I drove by there that morning.
I know, we saw you.
I saw you in a vest, I saw a couple in a vest. I appreciate you all being out there to help us.
We saw you, Robert pointed you out.
We waved to every single person.
I, can I just tell you, I got stationed right where people pull in.
Yeah.
And greeting kids back to school, it was so, but the parents were, you know, tired, the kids are like. Um, but it was, yeah, it was, it was kind of nice to be there. Um, Counselor Reed wandered down and. Checked out what was going on, so, um, yeah, lastly, so yeah, I have that with Smash Gaming, and. Um, I declined due to logistical reasons, but uh Congresswoman Salinas had invited me to the inauguration. But just I could not, even though I could do a little bit of networking, I could not justify the cost that would have been on our end, so. Um, with that. Brandon, I know you wanted to jump back.
Thank you. So, um, you, about a month or two ago, I mentioned the mandatory public meeting law training. Um, I did get with O G E C proactively. And if everybody is okay with, I have a few dates in March where we can do a uh an online training with the planning commission and everybody. If we don't talk anything about work, we don't have the public meeting it, and if we can just do it from our computers.
Remodeling?
Yes, how does March twenty-fourth? It's a Monday salad. I have the fifth, the sixth, the tenth, the thirteenth and the twenty-fourth.
And this is in the evening?
Yes, well, you don't have to go because you've already done yours.
It's just in the evening?
Twenty-fourth isn't.
Twenty fourth doesn't work for me, Monday, Monday evenings don't work.
I have my calendar with me.
Okay, so the thirteen to twenty fourth are out, I have the fifth, the sixth, actually, the sixth would be, no, we have council.
Council's thirteen.
Okay, so then we have the fifth, sixth, or tenth, tenth is a Monday, so that's no good for.
How long is it?
Two and a half hours.
Oh, so couldn't we tail that with the council meeting?
And I'm only doing this because.
Well, you just had.
The fifth and the sixth.
Yeah.
You'd say ten.
The tenth, but the tenth is a Monday, and that's no good for council.
Okay, so I don't think we're gonna find a date that works for everyone.
Yeah, what was wrong with the sixth?
Oh, nothing.
Miss Paul.
Don't know anything off the top of my head.
The evening, I can make whatever work.
Yeah, the evening.
Can make it work, okay. So I'm gonna then let O G E C know the sixth, and I'm gonna let the planning commission and budget committee members know as well. And it'll be two and a half hours, as long as you, we won't get.
You said in March?
Yes, it'll be a training, so as long as we don't talk city operations or ask things related to the city, we don't have to public meeting it. And it'll classify as your um, your, your two and a half hour class for your term.
Are you gonna have a, are we gonna do that here or on our computers?
Computers at home.
Where, wherever you want to do, coffee shop, Pizza Hut, Little Caesar's.
I was gonna ask if I had to be here, we'd probably be dinner, so. I have travel, I'm being hungry.
My keys.
Okay, that was it, sorry, so, March sixth.
I do have to be there, because I have to do it for this term.
Oh, okay, I'll, I'll.
You did it too early, didn't you?
I mean, I could wait two years and see you, um, online, but if you guys are all gonna do it, I'm gonna be with you. And since I like to bounce, I forgot, I actually had a second page, sorry, real quick, um. The Amity County Commissioners have a new counselor, um, Counselor King I had reached out to. To connect with him, we decided after his term started, which it has, um, and he has reached out and Brandon is scheduling a time for he and I. To meet with our new county commissioner, um, I encourage you guys also interested to reach out to your county commissioners. Um, since we network and connect with them, and then lastly, I am hosting this coming week. And along with Amity's mayor, Mayor King, a um, it's just a coffee time for um other Yen Hill County mayors to. Network and maybe learn from them, so now on to the next thing. Um. Number fourteen, um, the council will now hold a confidential executive session. Under O R S one nine two point six six zero. To H, to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties. Of a public body with regards to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. The only persons allowed in executive session are the city council, city staff, legitimate news media and others. So designated by the council, attendees of the executive session are advised not to report on. Or discuss in public matters discussed in the executive session. This executive session is expected to last forty five minutes. Um. At which time normally the council would reconvene and continue the public portion of tonight's agenda. All persons not involved in the executive session will be required to vacate. The council chambers until the council reconvenes a public meeting, however, if there are any. Um, we do not ha, expect any kind of um motion to come out of this and um. Will not need to be reconvened, are there objections from councils regarding my actions to close the public portion of tonight's meeting? To convene an executive session?
No.
Okay. Someone with light, oh no, because we're not adjourning, I'm just, I am spacing the public portion of tonight's meeting.